So, good evening, welcome to the August 6th, it's August 6th. Okay, meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Maggie Sharon and I am calling this meeting to order at 6:01. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas is posted on our Dover Sherburne District website. Please note, as I've said, that this meeting is being recorded and be aware that anything that you broadcast might be captured by the recording. Just to kind of go over for the visitors and for our committee members tonight about our agenda. And specifically, tonight's meeting is really going to have a beginning and an end. And we're hoping that that end, our expectation is that the end will be no more than one hour and 15 minutes after we begin. And to that end, we are going to take some community comments tonight. But, but we're going to limit the time on community comments. And please understand to community members who may have come to share information with us that we're not doing that in order to, because we don't want to have you be heard. We're doing that just simply because the purpose of our meeting tonight is to have deliberation among the regional school committee members as we're required to do through open meeting. And we can't do that if we don't have some time to talk amongst ourselves. So while we want you to stay for the whole meeting and we would like to hear from you, we are gonna, I'm gonna set my watch for 10 minutes from the beginning to the end. So I'm just asking that anyone who makes a community comment, please keep it as brief as possible. And then, you know, at that point of 10 minutes, I'm gonna close the period of community comments. So if you have a comment to make, I'm just gonna ask as I'm scrolling through the participants that you use the raise hand feature on Zoom, which if you go to participants and you find yourself, you will have the option to raise your hands and we will call on you and you can unmute yourself to make your comment. Folks on the call, if you want to also help me screen, that's always helpful. Find some folks.
I'm not seeing anything, Maggie.
Okay, alright. So I think it sounds like the community is, oh, we've got a hand up. So Meriwether Barras, if you could please unmute yourself and share your comment with us, please.
Hi, I'm Meriwether Barras, I'm a special educator up at the high school. And I just wanted to make sure, as we're considering any models, that the impact of the sort of inherent unpredictability of needing to quarantine, not knowing whether your teacher or yourself will be able to go to school every day, is taken into account specifically for kids who have pre-existing trauma or due to a disability or other need might require a high level of structure. I was just at a webinar today on a trauma-informed approach to the return to school. And the number one recommendation was a high level of predictability to get students out of that fight or flight mode. And there is a lot of inherent predictability in any sort of in-person model.
Thank you. I need a lot of your hands up? If you could just, when, yeah, when you are called on, if you could just share you, your role or where you live in Dover, Sherburne, or Boston?
So I'm a teacher at Dover Sherburne Regional High School. And I just have a quick question about how, regardless of the model we go to, how do we handle subs or teacher absences, like things like that? Like I think as teachers, we're sort of ready to embrace any model, but some of the unanswered questions that we have make it really difficult for us to figure out what to do. So for example, the teacher is out, are we covering each other? Will we be getting subs? Is, you know, I don't, there's a lot of questions around that. I'm not sure if that's something that you guys can help, help us answer.
Okay, so I'm getting information that our Zoom link, I thought we had access to the school Zoom link, but our Zoom link is capped at 100. This meeting is being recorded, so I'll invite anybody who hasn't been able to attend to, to please join us on the recording. There, at this point, unfortunately, technically isn't anything that I can do about it right now. I should also, in good faith, read the section about community comments, which is that community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief and move the discussion forward. Please try to avoid recording points that have been made. You're doing the things regarding raising your hand. And just to share that community comments are an opportunity for us to listen to community members, but we, it's not a format for us to be able to answer questions or engage in a debate. Anyway, alright, last things. Hands up, we also have Tricia, I don't, you don't have a last name here, but if you could.
Hi, hi, it's Tricia Caldecott. I'm, I live in Sherburne and I have a rising junior at the high school. And I'm just hoping tonight that you'll discuss the option of, I believe it's called high flex, where whether it's hybrid or full attendance at school, that the children who, or students who choose to stay home for whatever reason are allowed to participate remotely in, along with the live classroom.
Thank you. Lindsay Ford.
Hi, I am a parent in Dover and I have four children entering first grade, third grade, sixth grade, and eighth grade. And I think my biggest concern is just continuity of education for them, like the most, you know, sort of structured and continuous form of education that's not sort of choppy and broken up by, you know, the need to quarantine with four kids. If I have one child who is potentially exposed, my whole family then has to quarantine. So all four children are then at home. And, you know, that, I feel like is, is just difficult. So I just wanted to put that out there and just say the continuity of education, I think, for all students and faculty is really important.
Thank you, Lindsay. Alright, last call for community comments, we can probably take one more. Alright, I am gonna close community comments at this time. Thank you so much to all of you who've come tonight. And unfortunately, I wish there was something I could do to let the folks in, but, but at this point, you know, I can't. So regarding the rest of our agenda for tonight, we have received a communication from the Dover Sherburne Education Association, I'll be reading that aloud. We are then going to move into a workshop, which is going to be a structured conversation among the school committee members, where we're going to try to sort of unpack all of the concerns and thoughts and the different things that we are trying to wrestle with as we prepare for Tuesday's meeting, where we'll have our final presentation and an opportunity to vote to support the plan being put forward by our administrators. Alright. We, yesterday, received a letter from the Dover Sherburne Education Association. And I think it's important for the community that we share that letter with them, and so I'm gonna read it out loud. I just sort of do so without comment. Dear Dr. Kio, School Committee Members and Community Members, I wish to share some of the thoughts of members of the Dover Sherburne Education Association regarding the resumption of learning in our schools. As human beings who are part of the learning communities of Dover and Sherburne, our members are thinking about people we love, our families, and students that are entrusted to us. We do not want to put ourselves, communities, or students at risk by returning to Chikering Pine Hill in the middle school or the high school. A growing and evolving body of research addresses the risks of COVID-19 to young people as well as adults. Because we dearly miss seeing our students, we wish to ensure the safety when we return to our buildings. Though we have appreciated the directive to have students of all ages wear face coverings, including pre-k, kindergarten, and first grade students, we'd also appreciate seeing our schools go beyond the minimums required by states in other areas to minimize the risks of infection. As educators who deeply care about the social and emotional wellbeing of our students, our members have concerns about a full-time return to in-person learning or a hybrid model. No matter what we do, we understand that our learning communities will be affected this year by continued pandemic. Our students, their supportive families, and our own families, and we ourselves know, will know people who test positive for COVID-19, and we are all likely to see our loved ones suffer. The social and emotional burden of dealing with this and the potential trauma that young people rarely, if ever, are equipped to handle will increase the psychological cost of returning to our buildings. Perhaps even worse, the psychological cost of students and others having to self-quarantine or suspend in-person learning for all are burdens worth considering. We anticipate the significant numbers of student and teacher absences in order to adhere to health precautions and time away from the classroom for teachers and students could further contribute to anxiety surrounding this time in class. Though our students with anxiety issues would be more affected, others too would face challenges with these changes and disruptions in routines, whether they live in Dover, Sherburne, or Boston. As educators who routinely go above and beyond to ensure all our students are academically challenged and realize their potential, we wish to engage students in meaningful learning experiences that meet their needs. Given practical limits that will be placed on any in-person learning, we have concerns as to how effective we can be during such learning. No matter how much time we invest in preparing for instruction, as well as delivering whole-class lessons or working with students on an individual basis, it's difficult to imagine being fully effective in our classrooms. Lessons will be more teacher-driven with little or no movement within the classroom for both teachers and students. Instead of focusing on lessons and engagement of students, our attention will be divided, having to monitor the use of face coverings, especially in spaces where temperatures run high, distancing of students from one another in the classroom in the halls, and students' concerns, concerns that might include being in spaces with limited ventilation. We also will have less time to work with students because of having to clean our classrooms and other spaces in the buildings daily, if not hourly, even in the appropriate, if the appropriate cleaning supplies are available through the year. Beyond that, the hybrid model only allows half the teacher interaction with students across the schools than would a fully remote model. It is a better investment, a far better investment of teacher time and energy to focus on getting great at distance learning rather than dividing our energy between figuring out to work in a socially-distanced classroom and simultaneously creating asynchronous work that students will have to be very motivated to complete. The members of the DSEA therefore call on all three school committees for Dover, Sherburne, and the region to begin the year remotely. Respectfully submitted, Laura McGovern, President, Dover Sherburne Education Association. So I think it's important that the community know that, that we've received this letter and, you know, we need to, you know, deliberate and, and certainly the administrators also know that that letter has been sent to them as well. So we're gonna move into a structured discussion. The purpose of using this kind of structure to have our conversation tonight is really around the importance that all six of us have an opportunity to have our questions put on the table, to hear one another, and to share airtime. And also because it's our goal to use this time together in our open session to deliberate, to really get to the complex and nuanced issues that we are all collectively facing as we make this decision next week. Before we begin, I do want to say a particular thank you to all the members of the task force, the, the various subcommittees around the task force. There's been a lot of work and many hours spent this summer by folks, 12-month employees, and by many educators who are not 12-month employees, who are giving us their time to do this work this summer on behalf of our students. I think that's really important. I want to say a special thank you to all our school administrators, our principals, our building, and our district leaders who are truly, every day, thinking outside of every box as, you know, the community puts forth new and, and different ideas and kind of pushes folks thinking so that we can collectively get to the best answer for our students in our community in the next couple of days. This protocol has a pretty, pretty structured thing. We're gonna start with presenting the problem. I'll be the facilitator for this conversation, but most of the talking after we get to the presenting the problem won't be me. So we'll rely on our members and we'll speak in rounds. This is our dilemma, I think, is, is how I see it. We're voting next week to approve plans for reopening our schools in the midst of COVID-19. Countless folks have worked hundreds of hours on careful planning for three models to return to school. We are deeply grateful for all their thoughtful planning. Our constituents have widely varied needs for their children's educational experience. Our children have widely varied needs. Our employees have varied needs. Our taxpayers have expectations for what their schools will provide a community. We know that our members have more questions and concerns, and we're going to use this time as structured protocol for deliberation. Our focus question here is what model do we think will work best for all our stakeholders and provide the most effective education for children? So we're gonna do a round of clarifying questions. And in this format, each of us will ask clarifying questions that we need answers to or want answers to. We don't have to ask questions. We're gonna start with one question per member in a round. And since these are just sort of basic fact-based questions, I invite anyone from our school administration who has an easy answer to this to answer it. But I also understand that that's not what we're, we're, you know, not gonna like really deliberate tonight. So it's perfectly fine if we don't have an answer, we can put that on the table and, and, you know, table it for, for an answer later this week. So just clarifying informational questions about the plans that we are, are reviewing and deliberating. Who, which, which of you would like to start? Judy. Unmute yourself, Jude.
Thanks, if no one wants to, I will. The question, and I, we, we received this afternoon a new hybrid model. And I have the same question that I would have had under the old hybrid model versus this hybrid model. You know, I'm, I am a lawyer and in, in, in the law or in legal practice, we think that if we have zealous advocates for each position, we may be able to get the most in-depth information. And what I would like is a very, very in-depth, deep dive into what the best remote learning model, experience, whatever, what, what, what deeply it would look like? What would the students be doing? And more than a couple of sentences. And the same for the learning that occurs in the classroom. What can be done, what can't be done? Does, does, does that make sense?
I think it does. I think it is beyond the scope of the kind of questions we're asking here. But this meeting is being recorded, and while I'm not taking notes at this very moment, I will write your question down and we will absolutely pose that, you know, you're kind of looking for a day in the life of this kind of teaching versus that kind of teaching.
That's right, and, and I didn't understand, I didn't, I didn't understand the question from you.
Okay. Alright. Yes. Another person with clarifying questions, things you don't quite understand that you think we could get some answers to easily here, yeah. Lynn.
Why can't the teachers livestream the class so that kids can learn remotely? Remote kids can just watch the class online? I don't fully understand.
Okay.
Why that would work.
It's my understanding we don't have a question, an answer for that unless someone from the school district has one. But the, yeah, Andrew has an answer. Okay, Andrew.
Thanks, Maggie, and thank, thank you, Lynn. That's, that's a really good question, and we've heard it over and over and over. And a big, a big chunk of our time this week was really focusing on two things. One is, how can we offer a better remote experience for our students? Certainly for this meeting, we're talking about at the region, but across the district. And one of the things that we have decided that we think we can do at the middle school, and I would ask Beth to weigh in if people want us to, at the middle school to run a, basically, a remote schoolhouse within the middle school for our students who want, who feel they need to be home or have to be home for whatever reason, but want to be educated with Dover Sherburne folks. At the high school, where it's more complicated with levels and all sorts of different subject areas, we are recommending, as part of the hybrid model, that the high school students could zoom in, which is, in fact, what I think Mrs. Caldecott was talking about.
Okay, thank you. Um, next clarifying question. I have a clarifying question, which it sounds like, it sounds like what I'm hearing you say, Andrew, is that you guys are working on taking off the table the idea that our students who need to go remote or choose to go remote would be outsourced to an outside provider, that we're gonna attempt to do that in-house with our staff and our curriculum.
We are, we are. We also would still make available Virtual High School and TECA, which are, and, and the other, quite frankly, the other programs that we mentioned. Some of those are actually better than I think people think, but just the same. We, I think, the way I see it is that people should have that option. And I respect the fact that people would prefer, in many cases, to have their children zoom in. And it's a matter essentially of having the, the laptop on the desk for the teacher. I mean, some of the things that will have to be ironed out are simply administrative tasks that will have to be hired, hired, ironed out. How do kids ask questions and things like that? I don't think we need to get into those weeds in this conversation, but I do want people to know that that is in the works.
Okay. Other clarifying questions?
I have one.
Ian?
So my question's about, especially about special education students or students who need the greater consistency. If we do remote, or if even if we start hybrid and they're only in there some days a week, I know there was an asterisk on one of the plans that some students would be able to stay, would have, would be in school more days. Or potentially, if it were remote, there's still some students would be able to come in. I'm just seeking some clarification on that, especially for special education students. Does that make sense?
Yeah, do we have from the district any information on the students with high needs that would be asked? I know the state is asking that we have them in person every day. What's our approach gonna be to that?
Well, that, we, we're obligated by the state to ensure that our high-need students can be educated every day. That's not optional. So yes, that was part of our plan that we submitted, that, that, even if we're remote.
Thank you. Michael, did you have a clarifying question?
I'm not sure if it's clarifying, so you could just cut me off if it is.
I will.
I'm sure you will. Medical professionals I've spoken with express comfort with the hybrid model, assuming hygiene policies, which is primarily the masking and distancing policies are strictly adhered to both in and outside the school. Based on a combination of my own observations throughout the spring and summer, discussions with community members and with students, present adherence to these policies is anemic locally among middle school and high school students. And it is likely to remain anemic throughout the school year, at least outside of school. How does this impact the safety of any of the in-person models?
I, I think that that is, that is an absolutely informational question to the extent that any of us has a magic solution with what we do with the children when they're not in school. But I do think it's an important point that you raised. I don't know that there's anybody in the school administration who can tell us what to do about them when they're not with us, right?
Well, and if I can jump in to supplement that question, when they're not in school includes the bus stop.
I, I thought, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what Michael was saying. I thought he was wondering how we're going to enforce masks, mask-wearing in the school if the kids aren't wearing them outside of school.
No, it's actually how, how will the anticipated behavior outside and inside school, and, and I really refer to mostly outside school, how will that impact the, the base case plan for students being in school vis-à-vis health and outcomes and risks?
I'm gonna go with that's a question that although I, I trust and I love our school administrators, I don't think any of them can actually answer that question about what to do. I think that as community members, this has to be something that the community buys into and, and commits to. And I, I understand your concern, given what your observations of our community this summer. But I think we have to keep that on the table as one of our concerns for whether or not this is a good idea.
So do I get a mulligan?
Sure.
It's, it, thank you for sending around the, the survey information this afternoon, and I'm assuming that will get posted somewhere as well. It's, it's difficult from the presentations to get a good, accurate count on the staffs that are, the staff numbers that are depicted in the graphs. But my read of the wedges suggests that approximately 20 staff members or 10% will not return if there is an in-person model. First, I want to know, is that kind of factually correct? And if it is, what is the plan to backfill these losses?
If that's something you guys can easily answer, that's great. If it's something you need more time, let us know and we can cover it on Tuesday.
No, no problem. I, I would prefer to get, get the answers out if we can. And in this case, I can tell you that there's inconsistency in the numbers on those pie charts and the numbers of people who have reached out to us saying that they, that they will not be able to return. But that doesn't mean there aren't 20 people out there. There could in fact be that many. Our numbers appear lower at this stage. But I think a lot of what's driving that is what constitutes an acceptable reason to be out. And we, we need to make a determination as a district as to which way we're going before we, we settle into making those decisions.
Alright.
But it's, it's, it's high on the list of things that we have to concern ourselves with because obviously we need, we need all of our teachers and we don't want to lose teachers.
Alright, before we move forward, are there any, do we have Kate Young? Kate, do you have a clarifying question to ask?
I do, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I have many clarifying questions, but my first one, my, my one I will ask is, if we do begin the year remotely as the letter from the DSEA has requested, what needs to happen, what, what indicators, what changes need to happen to allow us to decide to move to hybrid or everybody if, if the health situation seems to be moving favorably?
Okay. I'm, I sense, since that was a letter that was written by DSEA and they didn't, they were not aware, folks were not aware that they were gonna be answering them, I'm gonna say I think that's an important question that we send back to them for them to answer for us, but probably not tonight. I also share that question.
Well, and I'm, yes, sorry to interrupt, if not just an answer from DSEA, and I, I realize I might not get it tonight.
Yeah.
But, but, but for us as a school committee to, to change to a new, whether we're back in hybrid or, or everybody, and what would need to happen?
Um, and I don't, does the district, Andrew or Beth, have metrics yet that we're working on? Or are we still working on like what our metrics would be to switch from one model to the next?
Well, we, we, we have metrics and we're expecting more detailed metrics. We're using in our minds kind of the metrics that the World Health Organization and really our governor has been using, which is the 5% rate of infection as being a re, an absolute solid reason for closure. But we may actually get a different number from the Department of Education. And the commissioner in his call today said we should get that in the next few days. And that's in terms of when we would close if we were in person in any form. In terms of when we would return from being remote, I don't have an answer to that, and I haven't heard an answer to that. I actually have the same question myself. Under what circumstances would we suddenly decide that it's okay to return to in-person? And that's a, that's a deep concern for me.
Alright. Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay, so I had, I had the opportunity to meet with the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee this afternoon. So again, this is a fast-moving train and I haven't even had a chance to catch up with Andrew since then. But I do know that Dr. Vitali and Dr. Peterson are working with their boards of health and larger agencies to create sort of a metric for Dover and Sherburne that could be used based on our statistics and our for Dover and Sherburne that could be used based on our statistics and our data for consideration by the school committees. And I believe that they will present that with Andrew's approval on Tuesday.
Okay. So kind of a flow chart, we move from this state to that stage at these points?
Yes, they are working on a slide and Dr. Vitale is so much better at explaining it in logical, medical, but understandable terms. And I think the committee will find it helpful.
Fantastic. All right. Before we move to the next part of this conversation, are there any other burning, just informational questions that any member, Michael?
Will the Boards of Health expressly sign off or be asked to sign off on all health and hygiene policies such as physical distancing, masking, symptom and positive test protocols, air quality, bathroom protections, meals and cleaning?
I have not, I have not asked them that specific question, but I think that their feeling has been that they have both sent fully qualified representatives to serve on the Health and Hygiene Committee and, and those folks report back to the Board of Health. But I do not get the sense, Michael, yet anyhow, that they want to take on that full, that full slot of work, you know, that I, I'm just not sure that they want to delve into every single little facet. I, I think that there's a very fine line, but I think that we will, we will see, you will see, that we have some pretty good health protocols coming along from these folks. They're really truly impressive in terms of under what circumstances does somebody have to quarantine? What do we do if a kid is sick? What do we do if a teacher is sick? And, and I know that that will be part of what, what you guys will be receiving. So. But as far as the Boards of Health making those determinations, could you just state again what it is that you would want to know if they were going to do, Michael? Because I missed that little piece.
Yeah, sure. The particular, I would want, and, and not necessarily even the entire constituted board, but even the, the physician representatives, doctors, Peterson and, help me.
Oh, Vitale.
Vitale, thank you. That they would be signing off on the things such as the, the physical distancing, masking, the policies for symptom and positive tests, the air quality sufficiency, bathroom protections and meals and cleaning. So I could email that list to you if.
Why don't, why don't, yeah, why don't we do that? Just because I know we're not, I mean, I, everyone I know is working on all this. And I, to your point, like those are all the details that we absolutely need to know about, but I think it's better if we email them.
If, if I could, Maggie?
Yeah, absolutely.
One of the requirements is of our final submittal is that we have to sign a certification that we are meeting those standards that Michael just mentioned. They're part of the DSC guidance.
Fantastic. Great. Do we have any, before we move to the next thing, do we have any comments? I know Judy, did you have anything? And?
Not right now. I, I don't have a clarifying question.
Okay. And Lynn?
Not sure if it's a clarifying question, but so Sherburne's rates doubled and Dover's rates are increasing. What's our, how does that, has the Board of Health expressed any opinion on how that impacts our plan? You know, what it, what it means for our towns for these, for these rates to go up so significantly?
So respectfully, I say this, Lynn, in, in terms of the big picture, they're, they're not going up nearly, I, I wouldn't say significantly, let's just put it that way. It seems significant in terms of our, our total number, but in terms of the percentage, it's not as high as one would think. But I, I, I hope, and I would ask that you would allow Matt to explain that because again, that's a big part of, that's an important, very important question that I think is on people's minds because we're hearing that, you know, rumors that there have been more cases and this, that, and the other thing. And by the way, Sherburne and Dover aren't, aren't our only concern.
Right.
We have, we, we're all Metro West Boston and most of our parents work in Boston. So we can't just look at Dover and Sherburne, and Matt will be the first one to say that. But he, he has some very good data that I think you folks will find, I don't know if I would say comforting, but I think it will set you more at ease in terms of concerns about rumors that we hear about numbers ticking up here and there.
And it's not even, I'm referring to their, to the Board of Health's publication. Like we went from, Sherburne went from 25 to 50. So it's not even rumors I'm talking about, but, but I, I totally see what you're saying.
Yeah. I think it's, it's really helpful when, when he looks at cases per 100,000, which is what the state works off of. And I think it puts things in perspective. And what he does, what he will do for us is he will take Dover and Sherburne combined and, and look at those, at those rates and where we stand relative to other areas in the state and our state in comparison to other states in New England and the country.
Thanks. We're going to segue to the next part of this conversation, which is an opportunity for each of our members to take a turn to make a statement based on something that you've heard and you think is important, based on the dilemma that's been presented and the answers you've heard to the clarifying questions. And so it usually, it helps to start with what I've heard the presenters say, and something that you think is important that you'd like to amplify based on what you've heard tonight in this conversation. So whoever is ready, I can't see everyone right now. So if, if someone would like to unmute themselves, one of our members, and just what I heard, heard you say with your understanding of where we're at?
I'll try one. It's, I'm not sure I quite understand, but I think this is it. So what I heard Andrew saying, this is an answer to my, I think this is an answer to my question, but that, maybe someone else, I'm sorry, was that students who are absent either because they feel the need to not be able to, if we go hybrid, if they feel they can't attend, or if they become sick or have to quarantine, that they will be able to follow along with the classes as a way to, to keep up with the work. Is that, is that accurate?
That would be an example of, yes.
Okay.
Some other member want to say something that they've heard said already tonight that you think is important? I'll go. One thing that I've heard the presenters say tonight is that the, the district has heard the concerns of community members and is working very hard to put together an in-house remote learning option for students who need to be home or whose families choose for them to be home, and that that's likely to work out at the elementary schools where we could have teachers who maybe need to teach remotely, who could be assigned to a class or something, and that the high school that might involve maybe some use of virtual high school, or the opportunity to possibly zoom into a class that might be hybrid for those two days, and then be following along and participating with them for the three days they're online. And that also goes with what I heard the presenters say and what we received this afternoon with the information that the high school has, has modified their model, is putting forward a model that instead of the teachers being there all four days and splitting the classes in half, that they will be having the, the underclass people come, you know, maybe Monday, Tuesday, and then they will be teaching them remotely Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and that they'll be having the upper class people come Thursday, you know, whatever, the opposite day, and they'll be teaching them remotely those days, and that they seem to think that they've been able to set up a schedule where that works for the great majority of courses and students, and that we'll be able to deal with the little singletons that don't fit in there. I see some nodding faces from Andrew and Elizabeth. Other people on the committee, Michael, Lynn, Kate or Judy?
Okay, I can go. Well, I guess what, what I hear is that the extent to which we feel that the community and the students can comply with the social distancing guidelines and the extent to which they can't or won't, or will be unable to, needs to factor into our deliberations in deciding what the best model is for our district.
Thank you. Judy or Kate?
Yeah, I'll go. Um, I heard and was very glad to hear the, the level of, the deep level that the two-town Board of Health are taking part in really every part of this process, and their continued help, and that we will get more information from them on Tuesday. I think that's great.
Thank you. Judy or Michael?
I'm going to pass for this round.
Okay.
I'll, I'll do the final jeopardy.
Yes.
I, I heard that there's some uncertainty as to the number of teachers who would not return for an in-person model, and that it's still to be discussed, proposed, determined what the standards, if any, would be beyond a medical leave standard for teachers who are not returning.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to do a second round, and, and this is a round where, and you know, again, the goal of this conversation is really to help each of the six of us and anybody who's listening in from the public to sort of really, it, it comes from a protocol called peeling the onion, to really get to the heart of the many different parts of this decision that makes this decision difficult. And in this round, we're asking that each of us take a turn identifying an assumption that they are seeing within the problem. So, you know, you could start your sharing out by saying something I assume to be true about this problem is, or one assumption that seems to be problematic, part of this problem is, I am happy to start that if it helps for you to have a model of what that looks like. So I would say that one assumption that seems to be part of this problem is that we have some specific challenges related to us being a, a small school system, and that, that creates challenges at the high school, you know, which is where we're focusing a lot of our energy, around singleton courses and around scheduling. And also, I have an assumption that one of the other sides of it being a small school system is that we can work individually with our faculty members who might have unique circumstances that would require some different working conditions, and that that might not be possible in a large system, but in a small system where we're dealing with individuals as people, that that might be something that we would be able to do to accommodate our faculty who have particular challenges, in the same way that we're accommodating our families who have particular challenges.
Maggie?
Yes.
Can I take a stab at one?
You can, please do.
And I'll probably get it wrong again this round.
It's okay. You're good.
One thing that I assume to be true about this problem is that in the hybrid model, the in-person teaching, which should be the, the more relaxed, more like we usually do, portion of the coursework is going to be fraught with difficulty and may not be as useful as the remote portion. Did I do that right?
You did it exactly right.
Okay.
I'll try something. I'm not quite sure, but one assumption that seems to be part of this problem is that if teachers are not able to come in, whether it's because in a short-term manner, because of illness or because they're quarantined, that there may not be a large enough subpool to handle those potential absences.
Thank you. Yep, Michael?
One thing that I assume to be true about this problem is that student and staff social, emotional well-being is paramount.
Thank you. Lynn or Kate?
Yep. I'm not sure I'm completely going to get this right, but I'll try. Um, one thing I assume to be true about this problem is that unfortunately, I fear that it might not be as short-lived as we all hope. And while I appreciate all of the arguments from both sides, I'm concerned about our long-term plans and not just educating everyone at home for a very, very long time.
Thank you. Lynn?
I'm, I mean, one of the assumptions that I'm making is the protocols around how to handle, or how we are required to handle kids that exhibit COVID-related symptoms is going to be a complete nightmare. Because Kay mentioned it at one of the meetings before one of the Zoom calls, any COVID system, system, symptom will require dismissal from school or not attending school and a COVID test. And there are 11, at least 11 listed in all the formal documents of COVID symptoms. So I think it's going to be a nightmare. That's an assumption.
Great. We're going to move on from this. Is there anyone didn't have a chance to talk or has another assumption that's really bubbled up for you that you feel like we need to hear? Okay. All right. This is where we get to the meaty stuff. We're going to do at least two rounds where each person offers a question that this dilemma raises for them, and it's not a question that we're going to answer right now. Remember, part of the reason why we're holding this meeting is just honestly to speak to the community, to speak to our faculty, and to speak to our school leaders who are doing all this planning every day, to give you some idea of what's on our minds prior to this decision next week, so that you can kind of understand what's, what's going on for us, and what are the questions that we have. Understanding, really, we get it. These questions don't necessarily have a lot of answers. So, a question this raises for me is, what are ways that we can focus on effective teaching and learning that will thread through the pandemic and be constant whether we can be in person or not? And what's the best way to build learning systems that are responsive to schools where kids might have to, and adults might have to come and go in unpredictable times?
I have one. Um, one question this raises for me is that a system that might work well for K to eight might not work well for the high school and vice versa.
Thank you.
Well, I can take another shot, can I, Maggie?
You're doing great. Yes.
One, this is, I, I want to say this. This is thought-provoking and difficult and interesting.
Thank you.
One question that this raises for me is, can we become a community that supports one another in ways that we haven't done in the past in order to meet this challenge? Can we support our educators and our staff in ways that we might not normally? Can we, can we support our working? our working parents in ways that we might not normally? And can we support the social and emotional, the, the unusual social and emotional needs of our students that have arisen in this situation? Can we put some extra supports in for that? How, how will we do that?
Yes, that's a perfectly great question. Lynn and or Michael?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go unless you'd like to, Lynn.
You go, I'll go next.
A dilemma that this raises, maybe it's a compound dilemma, around the best possible teaching model is whether by trying to leverage time and opportunity for in-person contact, are we making sacrifices of, of time or personnel that will detrimentally impact the learning process long-term?
Thank you. Lynn?
Now that my family's turned down the TV, I'm not sure if this fits into this mode, but one of my big questions is knowing that, you know, the science and human nature and everything sort of, it clearly points to in-person instruction is essential for kids' well-being, for their education. It's so overwhelming that it's essential. And my question is whether the in-person model that we would have to create under these circumstances, you know, with the rigid classroom structure, the no movement, the teacher staying six feet away, you know, the bathroom breaks regulated, the, you know, the, the testing requirements, kids leaving you know, class for weeks, all of these intense restrictions, how does, how does that balance, how does that trauma balance against the trauma of not being in school? And I don't know how we resolve that.
Okay, thank you. Ann?
Lynn actually got, ended up asking pretty much what I was thinking. It's really about how do we, what do we need to do to support our students' social, emotional well-being, regardless of the model, understanding especially that there's been trauma for some, understanding that there will be inconsistency, understanding that even the in-person will be unusual or different. How can we really support all that? And how can we create within the students a sense of community and support? Whether, regardless of what model, we choose any, are there ways that we can almost hybrid, steal from the different models, pieces that work?
So we're gonna do two rounds of this because I think this is where we get to the meat of the complex issues that we're all wrestling with and hopefully give our, did you, did you have not a chance to go, Judy?
Kate?
Oh, Kate. No, Kate, Kate went, no, Kate didn't go. I'm so sorry. Kate, a question this raises for you.
I did, I went early on.
I was, I was taking a sentence, um, but thank you. A question this raises for me, a further question this raises for me as I listen to each of you talk is are there any, I mean, we've talked about, you know, our high-need students and their need to be in the building, no matter what remote model or hybrid model or whatever we do. A question this raises for me is, is there, is, are there students who need in-person instruction more than others? And this gets out of the purview of the region, but it, it makes me wonder, you know, whether or not starting with, say, a preschool cohort and seeing how that goes, is there, if there's some value with that and building from there? And I don't know the question, answer to that, obviously, but, but that's a question that it's got me thinking about who can best use remote learning versus who, who isn't served very well? And, and whether or not we can build up in that way and if there's any value to that. Other questions? Yep, Michael?
Thank you, Maggie. Kind of building on Lynn's question or observation about in-class restrictions and rigidity, a question that comes up for me is whether social, emotional health could be well facilitated through a school camp during the 10-day period for socialization and interaction and connection building. And a potential, I refer to it as a reverse hybrid model whereby one day in school with, in, in person, could be focused on exclusively connecting and kind of high emotional touch activities like advisories and guidance seminars, PE, arts, peer-helping activities, world of difference, that type of.
Thank you. Caitlin or Judy or Ann?
I, I'm, sorry, I have a question about, oh, sorry, Kate, did I cut you off?
Nope.
Yep. A question about how are we going to assess how things are working? Things are gonna be changing and potentially changing rapidly, not just from the health front, but as the teachers figure out how things are going, how the parents, how the students, how are we assessing? Or do we have a method for assessing how things are going as we start this, the year out? And potentially then be able to make changes? Will there be an opportunity to make changes even within a given model? Once the year begins?
Thanks. Kate?
Yeah, another question I have and clearly the health and safety of students and staff are at the top of our priority list. I am hoping and wondering, are we putting a value on in-person human interaction as well? Because obviously, safety comes first, but I think I'm really hoping that we're not putting aside how important it is for kids to see one another and their teachers, even if it's in a row with a mask on, two days a week. I think there's a lot of value there.
Thanks. Judy or Lynn? Any further questions? You're good, Lynn. Judy?
I'm good.
Okay, great. All right, we're gonna do one round of what-if. And this is one more opportunity for us to peel the onion and to think creatively and outside of the box. And for us to have an opportunity to ask, have we considered, or I wonder, or what if? So I think that's pretty self-explanatory and this is your opportunity to put, put your outside-of-the-box thoughts on the table. What if? Who would like to go first? Michael?
Well, I, I think I did my outside-the-box the last go-around, but that was kind of sneaky. I guess, and, and I'm not sure if this is really an outside-the-box, but the, the what-if would be an amplification of one of the last questions. But what if we could be deeply committed as a school system to rapid and continuous assessment of how we're doing and improvement as we go on? So we're learning from ourselves and we're learning from others and making things better as we go.
I would say what if I were capable of thinking outside the box on this issue? Complicated.
Yeah, hard. Ann?
How about what if there were different ways, because we kept talking about the importance of face-to-face, but what if there are different ways to achieve that that feel safer and that allow for the quality of education that needs to really happen or that it's expected to happen, especially at our high school, but you know, throughout the region?
Kate or Judy?
I'm gonna pass.
Okay. I'm wondering if we have considered, you know, I, I'm thinking about our families who have concern, you know, and this does apply a little more to younger students, but who have, you know, are essential workers who have, you know, jobs where they need to go and say, have we considered any kind of opportunity for a learn, and this might span out of the school system and into community, yeah, but is there anywhere where we could host a learning lab? Where even during times where we're remote or certain kids are remote, that there could be a, a place for kids who need a safe place to do their remote learning to, to go or be? And I don't, I, it's just my outside-of-the-box conversation. I'm also wondering whether or not we can offer anything in terms of our teachers who are parents in terms of offering them, I know we don't do that here, but I'm wondering, is there any opportunity for them to have an opportunity to attend our schools for a year if they are running into childcare problems that would prevent them from working? And whether or not that we have any bandwidth for that or not? And I'm wondering, I, I'm, I, I am also wondering a lot about, as Kate mentioned earlier, the reality that the trajectory of this illness isn't just about this fall. It's about a lot of time until we get to a vaccine or a efficacy, a treatment with efficacy, I think is the word. And understanding that we need to, you know, rethink all of our, all of the promises that education has made to our communities and, and really make sure that we're getting the essential promises kept of education and that we're also paying attention to the de facto promises of childcare and social support and a safety net and food and, and all the other things that schools have historically done. Before I close this, this section down, is there anybody else who'd like to wonder something? Yes, Michael and then Lynn?
Thanks, Maggie. Adding, adding to your leveraging of, of other opportunities potentially, I wonder if there are opportunities to leverage both parent volunteers as well as the allegiance of DS alums who are going to be living within our communities because they're home from college.
Thanks. And Lynn?
That was, that was mine. I wonder to what extent we can leverage our community and the resources and people that are available to help support our community's children.
Kate or Judy, anything before we close this section?
Can I, sorry, can I?
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry, Ann.
But that's okay. I wonder if we've really made sure that all of our students have what they need to do their remote learning? Do they all really have, do they all have a safe place? Do they all have the equipment they need? Do they all have Wi-Fi access? Do they all have? You know, it could, it could be food. Do they all have whatever it is that we need? I wonder if we really, I know we did it last spring, but I wonder if we've really made sure that come September, that regardless of the plan that we do, if they're really in a position where they will be able to take full advantage of their education?
Thank you. Caitlin? Just because I can't see them for some reason on my screen. All right. All right, we're gonna do one last round because I'm watching the time. It's 7:06 and I did promise. And this is something you, if you are a school committee member, can certainly take a stab at, or you are welcome to pass if, if you don't have any new thinking. And this is really sort of our last now of thinking. It doesn't mean you have to say, like, now I am thinking, I stand here, but are there any new thoughts that have occurred as a, as a result of listening to this conversation or being part of this conversation that you think it's important for your other school committee colleagues to hear?
I mean, I go?
Yes, please.
The fact that we are now reevaluating the all-remote program to be in-house makes me think that that alleviates concern on the part of a lot of parents. Because I wasn't sure what to think of the survey results when we, you know, when we asked, do you want hybrid? And, and we answered, but we answered without knowing what it's gonna look like. And one of the key pieces was, I think we, a lot of people assumed that remote would mean that they're still being taught by their own teachers, but just through technology. And when that turned out to be different, that changed, I would imagine that would have changed how many families would have answered that question. You know what I mean? And, but I feel like now we're kind of coming back to what people had assumed would have been the case all along.
Now I am thinking that there are more possibilities for a hybrid model at the high school, given the model where the teachers attend two days with a smaller cohort and then three days at home, both in terms of students who are, who are learning remotely, who would want to participate in that kind of model and in terms of the exposure to the teachers and the efficacy of the, of the time on learning that was changed in that, in that model change. And that's complicating my thinking.
Can I say something?
Oh, please, Judy.
Okay, this is probably not what you want to hear.
That's not why we're doing this. Just say what you're thinking.
Okay, what I'm thinking is this hasn't answered what I want to know. And what I want to know is, what is the teaching? And I said this at the beginning, in a very deep dive, how are we going to actually educate kids basically wearing straitjackets? And I gotta tell you, I really like the new hybrid model that came out. I think it's as close as you can get to a good hybrid model. There is no good hybrid model and there's no good hybrid model for any of this. There's no good remote model. I'm thinking, I really want that deep dive and I want someone who embraces remote learning to give us a deep dive of their vision of what remote learning is. I, I need to hear what the best of each of those types of learning is for me to make a decision.
Thank you.
Can I go?
Yes, please.
My internet's being tricky, so I apologize. I would like to underscore, highlight what you just said, Maggie, that for me, learning more about the newer version of the high school hybrid. underscore, highlight what you just said, Maggie, that for me, learning more about the newer version of the high school hybrid was really exciting. I realize it's not perfect, but as we've all said, none of this is perfect. And I'm hoping it seems to have answered a lot of questions that the teachers had about the quality of instruction. And, and I'm wondering if we'll get a chance to hear their thoughts on this new hybrid.
Thank you. Michael or Ann?
I, I can really just quickly, because I'm going to piggyback on Kate. I would like to reiterate that I'd really like to, I'm thinking that I'd really like to hear what the teachers think about the new hybrid model.
Thank you. Michael?
I don't, I don't know if Judy and Kate and Ann can bear the weight of me piggybacking. But, I mean, I, I, I too, and, and, and kind of just rewinding, I think this is probably stated tonight already, but we have heard from a number of teachers who have opined that the the remote model is, is superior to the hybrid model from an acad, purely academic standpoint, due to the physical limitations and the number of contact days that the teachers have available with their students. And, and that really, that really, that weighs very heavy, hearing that, and I would like to understand from a purely academic standpoint and from a teacher's standpoint, which model is most likely to deliver the best academic outcomes on a sustained basis?
Thanks. All right. So we're going to use this as sort of our closing. Obviously, we've brought up a lot of points tonight following the meeting. I, I will optimize it and get it, get it to, to set up to be able to be published for folks to watch it, especially for those over 100 who were not able to join us because of the limitations of our Zoom. I invite any of us to share with me questions that they feel that they need more information about. I will compile them and send them to Andrew and, and hopefully, you know, by the end of this week so that they can be kind of chipped away at. I wanted to say a huge thank you to all of the members of the faculty of the Dover Sherburne Schools, as well as the leadership team who joined us tonight. For them, that's yet another meeting that adds on to the many, many meetings that folks have been part of in the last few weeks as we get ready to go back to school. So please accept our very grateful thanks for your time. And with that, we actually need to poll to adjourn this meeting. I'd like to ask for those of you who have attended, who are members of the public, please direct your further questions to dsreopening@doversherburn.org. You may, of course, always reach out directly to your school representatives, school committee reps. We're always happy to hear from you. And with that, I invite, is there anyone who has a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Michael Jaffe, so moved?
Lynn Collins, second.
Lynn Collins, second. Unmute yourselves. Michael Jaffe?
Yes.
Ann Hovey?
Yes.
Kate Potter?
Yes.
Lynn Collins?
Yes.
Judy Miller?
Yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. And with that, thank you very much, everyone. This meeting is adjourned. We'll see you next Tuesday.